Monday, October ninth, twenty seventeen, regular session of Anamosa City Council, City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh, motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting. September twenty fifth, twenty seventeen, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Betty. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Three point oh, public hearings, three point one, public hearing on proposed amendment to the zoning regulation to prohibit razor wire, Constantina wire, and similar wire fences, and I'll open the public hearing.
I haven't had anybody talking about it.
We haven't received any written comments, but we did receive one verbal comment today at City Hall in favor of prohibiting.
I have, but I lived in the mix of it, but I have heard lots of in favor of prohibiting.
Move to close the hearing.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rod, to close the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Four point oh, presentations, four point one, Emily Uppa, Alliant Energy, update on community annual partnership assessment report.
Well, good evening, and thank you guys all for allowing me to come to your council meeting tonight. I'm Emily Uppa, I am the city's key account manager for Alliant Energy, which really means I am your central resource at Alliant Energy. So, any issues, anything that you guys have going on, we always want to know about it, so we can get you connected with some internal resources. I am actually fairly new to the organization, I've been there for just over four months, and been serving the community of Anamosa for about two weeks. So, we're learning a lot as we go on. I came from an economic development background, Iowa's Economic Development Director in Benton County for the last three years, so I have close ties to both our regional economic development organizations, as well as kind of what some state economic development organizations are doing around the state of Iowa. So, it's a really nice connection here that I get to serve the community of Anamosa. My purpose for being here tonight is, every year we like to report out what we do inside the community, so whether that's infrastructure improvements, whether that is some of the partnerships that you guys have participated on in some of those things. The data that I'm presenting tonight is actually from two thousand seven or sixteen. We made it a goal to get out earlier in the year in two thousand seventeen, however, as we're all transitioning into new positions, we're kind of just now catching up on these reports for the year. So, the first thing that I want to start off with is Alliant Energy made some infrastructure improvements to, as to one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in ninety, one hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars in two thousand sixteen. Those were all electric infrastructure improvements, as Alliant does not serve a national gas. Alliant also paid roughly eighty thousand dollars in community, uh, income prac, or community property tax, and three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in county property tax. Some of the more fun things to talk about, as we have more visual in your community, Alliant Energy also donated about twenty-four hundred dollars to economic development. Four hundred of that was dues to the Anamosa Chamber, and the other two thousand of that was to the Jones County Economic Development Organization. We also support your community in other ways, through in-kind donations. So, about three weeks ago, twenty-six of Alliant's employees went and volunteered at Camp Courageous for the day. While we know that's not directly in Anamosa, however, it is, we did see some of the Anamosa students wandering around while we were there, so it was always nice to see that as well. Crews also worked on setting up a street bunker at the Jones County Fair, as well as brought temporary power to a vendor at Saint Patrick's Church. The other thing that we did is the branching out grant. You guys participated in two branching out grants in two thousand sixteen totaling five thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars were to replace storm damaged trees, and two thousand fifty dollars were to replace trees on the courthouse property. The other thing that we do inside of all of our communities is we participate in energy efficiency programs. So, we offer energy efficiency programs to your businesses, both commercial and industrial, as well as your small businesses, and your residents inside the community. In two thousand sixteen, there were seventy-eight rebates specifically given in Anamosa. That total was around one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. There was a total of six hundred thousand seventy-one dollars and six hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and forty-one kilowatt hours in savings, and also there is a dealer incentive as well, so some of your folks were able to get incentives for their dealers as well, which totaled two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. The last thing that I wanted to mention is there's always room for continued partnership with Alliant Energy, whether that be through community foundation programs. Our foundation supports safety, helping families, safety, helping families' education, and the environment. So, there's always opportunities to gain additional grant funding through those sources, as well as a branching out program, again, that you guys have participated in that in the past, and that cycle is coming to a close here on November first. So, if you guys have any parks projects coming along, if you guys have any streetscape projects that you guys would need trees for, let us know, and we can get you in on this cycle for the spring. Do you guys have any questions about that information that was presented?
I don't believe so.
Great, and we can get all of this information to Tammy as well, and she can send it out to you guys if you guys do have any additional questions. Other than that, please keep me, always keep me updated with what's happening in your community, we always want to be a regular participant. So, if there's anything we can ever do, if there's any folks that you think would benefit from some energy efficiency programs, always send us, them our way.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the highlighter.
Oh, we always want to try and brighten your day.
That two-edged sword.
Five point oh, proclamations, none, council action items, six point oh, community betterment. Six point one, discussion, possible action on appointment to the ECAG board to fill vacancy due to the retirement of Al Johnson, city administrator.
Is this going to be a temporary placement, or until the new administrator's hired? Or what is the plan on that?
It's totally up to the council, the mayor.
Well, that's, that's what I want to point out, Al is continuing in his position as...
As a citizen.
As a citizen, because he's... He's leading the board until the end of the year, and Dusty Embry was a citizen because of the economic development role she filled. So, we need to have a person that is elected, or reports to an elected position within the city, and actually, all of the, as, as the people that are serving on those boards know, it's the mayor's prerogative to assign individuals to fill specific roles. But, I put this on here at Janine's request, so we got somebody to fill Al's seat.
It's one of the meetings. We don't want to appoint somebody that can't make the meetings though either.
They're in the afternoon on a third, I think they're the third or the fourth. Thursday of the month, so it'd be an afternoon meeting, usually either at eleven or one.
And did you have somebody in mind, Mr. Mayor?
I thought maybe that I'd pick on Betty this time.
My new job allows me to go to these meetings.
Well, that makes that a lot easier.
In fact, I would probably be bored even if I were there long enough.
Well, we'll send you on our behalf.
We just need a motion from the council.
I'll make that motion to, uh, support, confirm the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
First by Bill, second by John.
So, Betty, what is your, your thoughts? Can you make the meeting, or?
Yes, I would be there whether I was, part of my job is that I have to work with, like, the VA, with Forest Development, Economic Development, like ECAG, like, I am, like, probably seventy percent of my work time is going to be in meetings like that.
Well, I just wouldn't, uh...
Yeah.
Put you into a situation where you can't attend, because it's vital that we have representation.
And my company that I work for now is very good about working around things, because I'm supposed to be in Texas this week, and because of the council meeting tonight, and I missed the last one, but being in Cincinnati, I'm able to. So, they're very flexible about what I'm doing right now.
This wouldn't be in conflict with your job in any way, would it?
I just have to be informed.
How often are these meetings?
Once a month.
And this is temporary, or is this...
Until we get another city...
Until you change it again.
Yeah, until I change. And if you run into problems making the meetings, you can always let me know.
I'm a career consultant, so all I need to know is what's going on in the job market, what's going on in businesses, what's going, like, you know, that kind of a thing.
So, you should be able to make those.
Mm-hmm, so there's no decision making at, like, the local, or anything?
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Six point two, discussion, possible action on first reading of ordinance, amending zoning regulations to prohibit razor wire, Constantina wire, and similar wire fences.
Move to approve in first reading.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Betty. And it's a roll vote, unless you have discussion.
Any other discussion?
Just in no way will affect Iowa State Prison, will not affect any, anything of that nature.
It shouldn't, if anybody can get into their wire, there, someplace they should be.
Well, I, and...
And it's way...
And I was thinking also about if we ever do build a new combined sheriff's department, police department, if they have any jails or anything, prison areas, will that affect that too?
That would be something we would have to, uh...
Do they fall under a different guideline, like municipalities do?
I know the state does, I'm kind of changing probably on a different guideline, I'm not sure about the local ones, I can ask them.
That would be good to know. This is changeable, if we find out that it's not going to work in the future.
Any further discussion? It's a roll vote.
Bill.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And a possible waiver of the second and third reading.
No move.
First by Bill. Well.
I'm typically opposed to waiving these readings. I'm a second motion.
A second by Rod.
Um, do you think there's going to be no further, I mean, should we wait until we find out about a higher level of these jails?
Should make no impact, I don't see a jail being built for many years, and as I said, these are all changeable, if we find out where there's...
Okay.
I don't anticipate the taxpayers are going to build a new jail anytime soon.
Unless you have a couple million dollars in your pocket, you could...
Somewhere around a hundred and eighty-five or so.
Yeah.
Hmm, I didn't even want to buy a car, you think I want to buy a jail?
And that too is a roll vote.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
No.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
No.
Bill.
Yes.
Six point three, discussion, possible action on first reading of ordinance, adding provision to zoning regulations to permit implementation of soil erosion control practices in connection with the issuance of a development permit.
Move to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Betty. Any discussion?
Um, who, who's going to follow up on this during construction phases when we...
Greg, our street superintendent, who does the inspections.
And what, what guidelines are we going to be enforcing, other than you must use erosion controls practices?
To, to avoid it falling onto someone else's property, so that's what Greg would monitor that, to make sure that they, they wouldn't approve, the building permit would not be approved until that's in place, and then Greg would check it to make sure that it is in place, and then it will remain in place. There's probably not a huge amount of properties that are going to create this, but we'll find out as you go along with any new, it's basically your new building, where you've got a bare piece of ground.
Well, anything over a hundred and fifty square feet, or with a permanent foundation.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about the lay of the land, somebody higher to somebody lower. That's, that's the determination that the zoning administrator's going to look at and say.
It just doesn't state anything that, on a grade percentage, or, uh, anything of that nature, so...
It's going to be a judgment call by the zoning administrator, working with the building inspector, not building inspector, but permit inspector, which is Greg Carpenter, so it'll be common sense.
Some things are obvious, if soil erosion from new constructions coming on to a house that's been there ten years, that's going to be an obvious, if there's rucks in their yard because of it, it'll be obvious.
If that's after the fact, if this is supposed to be before the permit is issued.
Correct.
So, let me read...
But I'm just saying that.
So, let me read to the public the proposed wording, I think we're bickering over happy and glad.
Yes.
One sixty-five point twenty-five A erosion control practices. In connection with the issuance of a development permit, the zoning building administrator may require the implementation of soil erosion control practices on the property for which the development permit is issued if the soil types and/or topography of the property present, present a probability of soil being eroded from the property being developed onto adjoining properties or city right of way during the course of construction in the event of rain. Seems pretty straightforward, it gives the zoning and building administrator the authority to decide, that's what he gets paid for, or she, depending on who we hire.
So, what, I guess I, I understand your point, Bill. There's, what are you binding them to?
Putting up erosion control practices, Doug Rickles got a complaint.
And, and I get that, but it says it may require, which is about as gray as it can get.
And why would you have somebody building on a flat piece of property to put up the steel post and the black vinyl to hold back the water? Now, if you're dealing with Doug Rickles' property, that has been talked about in this chamber a couple of times, he has the, and I believe Greg put those steel posts and the black vinyl up around the beehives, but Doug has put the straw, um, not really mass tubes, down on the end of his property to keep the soil from getting on to, uh, the street, after we've had that discussion about, you know, not being able to seed yet. And that's what's required, just the same thing the REC did when they had contractor put seed in by their new building, they put that erosion control, uh, straw tubes and hay bales at the end of the parking lot to slow the water down, so it didn't wash the dirt down into the storm sewer.
This is also talking about the soil erosion, and that, that's where, to me, where the focus is, but you can also allow the rainwater, the rain to rush, and granted, it's going to carry, because it's a construction site, it's going to carry the soil, but the diversion of that water, something may need to collect it, slow it down, or reduce it, and I don't see where that is defined within this. And again, the requirements, I'm, I'm not seeing any requirements here.
Okay.
So, it's, it's to the discretion.
Okay, so, if we have enough members on this council that think that this is not adequate, send it back to the city attorney, he's the one that drew this up. You guys asked for this?
What would need to be added to it?
I'm not, not even close to being an expert in the field of erosion or construction.
Well, I'm on board with Rod here, um, but I do work on a lot of construction sites in a lot of communities that, whether it's flat or on a hill, you still have to put erosion and silt fence in place.
Except in Anamosa, because we've never had it.
Well, I understand that, but I don't think we should just half-ass something to throw it on the books, because we have one property that we have an issue with, so if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Get rid of the word "may"?
And I don't want to split hairs, but I, you know, at some point, I want to be able to say, you know, we're bound to that, that, that's clearly defined, and John Doe contractor, you need to put these in place.
Okay, I mean, you guys got this Thursday last week, you had time to look at it and talk to Tammy, I'm just saying, if you don't like it, vote it down.
I, I really think it's better that we all talk about it here.
Let's come to the...
Come to...
Have you kept step up?
Please.
If you're trying to decipher...
Name, address.
Oh, sorry, Jeff Merrick, seven oh five North Williams Street, Anamosa. If you're trying to decipher what stipulations should be set up, check with somebody like Marion, and see what the wording is for theirs, because they're strict, everything you do, like Cody said, you go to some places, it doesn't matter what the job site is, it doesn't matter what the grade is, if anything gets in the street, the contractor pays a fee, he, he gets fined, I mean, he's out there scooping with a shovel and getting the mud out, you don't let anything come into the street or any other people's property, this is all protected, there's just specific rules, and I don't know if it just blatantly, or bland, says, "Keep it from coming out," or if it just says, "You got to have this size of protection for this side of, you know, the street," but it's very specific, and you check with them, and at least get a better idea if you have to have a tighter clarification on the requirements.
They have strict building codes throughout that county, we have zero.
Right, which needs to change.
Thank you.
It's just...
Yay!
One step at a time, you can't, you can't do it all in one day.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm Linda Lyons, and I live on Chamber Drive. I was here a month ago about a problem that we have on Chamber Drive with Council Street above us. First, I'd like to thank the councilmen that made the attempt in their own time to come and approach me, and I walked the, the ground, and I showed them what the problem was. We have buildings and, and homes that are being put up on Council Street above us, and if you, you just go out there and look, there's a tile line going right down the hill onto our property, right in our backyards. Now, we've had a dry summer, but if we get a heavy rain, drive up Chamber Drive Street, and you will see creeks of water going between most of our homes, and it is eroding the hill, it's eroding the land, and it's going to be a big problem. Now, I've talked to Jeff Minger, who is, uh, very good, very smart, and he said that, that we, he thought we could solve this problem if the city would get in there, and between the division, in other words, come down the hill between Council Street and Chamber, and put in some drainages there that will take the water off that's coming down, instead of having all those tile lines, because when they construct more houses there, there's more, going to be more tile lines, there's already three or four with the houses that are already there, it's going to be a problem, it's going to be a real mess, and anybody that wants to come, stop at my door, I'm the only greenhouse on Chamber Drive, I'll be happy to walk with you and show you what it looks like, and I, I just hope that we can do something about it. If we can do something and fix it, it would be nice. There's going to be more housing and more development out that area, and if we don't get a handle on it and decide, we need to look at this drainage problem now for everybody, not just Chamber Drive, but everybody, because to me, if this can be a simple solution of putting in a drain, why don't we just get in the habit of looking into it? I, I do have one question, though, I'd like to know who this Greg Carpenter is, and is he an engineer? Does he have some kind of, of a degree that, that qualifies him to make the calls on these things? I'm new in town, I don't know him, I wouldn't even know if he's here tonight.
We did not, we did not say he was going to be the one to decide whether it was, he's the one that checks to make sure that the...
Well, what is his credentials?
He is a street superintendent.
And where does he, did he, does he have an engineering degree?
No, he doesn't.
He just does this, so it's...
Common sense.
Well, common sense, I don't know, come and look, take a look at our situation, and it's just bad, and it's, it's not very nice for somebody to build a house and put the drainage into somebody else's backyard. That's not very, uh, caring about your neighbors.
Thank you.
I looked at that, and there was a silt fence that used to be up along the back of everybody's property line there, and when they mowed, they just mowed it and knocked it over, and that silt fence is no longer there. So, that was that one time holding the water back, but it's gone.
But did they put drains for the downspouts, and shooting it on to the neighbors?
Yeah, I've been out past there.
They've got some tiles running, running off.
Yours is one I really want, what if we ever had a fire in one of those houses up there? That water's going to come downhill, we're going to be flooded.
I think it's like you said, Rod, there's other stuff besides just the erosion, like this lady said, that, you know, that situation there, something needs to be done to stop that too, that we got to do something.
I, I just, I would rather dig deep into this, peel the layers back now, and make a stronger attempt to write this before...
Coming back later.
Yes.
I'll withdraw my motion.
So, do we just take it back and...
You have to withdraw your motion.
Oh.
If you're the second.
I withdraw my, I'm sorry.
So, we'll send this to Adrian and have him...
Have him what, take out "may" and have, like Cody said, an all or none? I mean, make it very defined, that you must carry the perimeter, so there's no erosion whatsoever if you're going to build?
But still, then, you got, like this lady said, though, you got water, really isn't eroding, it can just be flooding through there, hitting their house.
I don't know if one rule will capture all, you know, do you cookie cutter this? But if it cap, captures eighty percent, more definition here will capture eighty percent, then there's only twenty percent out there we got to worry about from time to time. Again, this should really go to someone who's an expert in the field, not questioning Adrian, but I would think he would work with other municipalities to see what they have in place, and spin off from that, massage it to fit Anamosa's personality, and bring it back before us.
Well, and the unfortunate part is for, like, Mrs. Lyons, that is after the fact.
Yeah, it's...
That's, because the houses are built, it's after the fact, this is during construction phase, so there may be another portion that we need to look into for a long-term solution.
I agree.
At least one thing, we know that those rain spouts aren't into the sanitary sewer.
Well, and, yeah, with Lyons', Linda's issue here, you know, at one time, there was no developed houses up in that area, and the natural flow of the rain captured itself in cockets and depressions, and it didn't pick up the speed, you know, or the free-for-all run it does now. Adrian was going to look into that as well, and I haven't heard back from him.
What was, I'm sorry?
Oh, I, we're probably talking one to two months ago now.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, when they, when they were here the last time, Adrian was going to look into see what, what could be put in, was in place.
That's what, that's what this ordinance is from.
That, this is all spinning off of that.
That's all spinning off of that, correct.
Well, I'd like to see him reinvest some more time. Well, I'd like to see him reinvest some more time at this.
Okay.
All right, so.
So in reinvesting some more time, we're not really giving him any direction other than see what other cities are doing? Is that his direction?
She went Marion.
I'm just asking for clarification, because I guess when I'm Adrian and I get this, I'd be like, what is there want and done?
Well, it sounds to me like they want something as strict as Marion or Cedar Rapids.
Or some more, some more.
Need into this.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know, I wouldn't want to use the word as strict as them.
Spilled out a little more.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Yes.
Maybe we're going down a path and just, I, I'd rather ask the questions now than on the backside.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do we have storm drain implosion when contractors build these developments? Do we require them to put storm drains in?
File on the site plan from the engineer.
Right.
Yeah, but on houses, on, on, on residential houses, there is nothing restricting that. There's a section of the code I'm gonna look at regarding.
Do we have a bill here? Do you know the answer to that?
Because between property and.
Do you have anything, man?
Will you build houses, you, you construct?
There's. There's nothing in residential, no, you, you, the, the utility's already provided. It's a matter of you keep it on the property.
Thank you, Mike.
So I don't know if there's storm drains up in there or not, I, I can't remember.
All right, we'll send that one back to Adrian. Seven point oh, public safety, seven point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license.
Oh, oh, oh.
What?
Back up, six point four.
Yeah, we just did six point four.
Oh. All right, my pen must have slipped. Six point four, discussion of possible action on first reading of ordinance, amending section one point one oh of the city code to delete possibility of imprisonment for violation of code of ordinances.
That was good, bros.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rich.
I have some questions on this. So there's only a jail sentence if the city attorney recommends that, correct? Like, just because you give somebody a fraction doesn't mean they go to jail unless the city attorney's the one. And that is when they would need a public defender, is that correct? That we would be paying the fees on it?
Correct.
How many times have we been in?
We don't, I asked Travis that question.
I can, this whole thing kinda confused me.
This is just to protect the city in a what-if case, because the potential is out there for this to happen. And since they don't use that, when the police, according to Sergeant McNally, when the police prosecute most of the offenses, the traffic offenses are all processed under the city code. Um, everything else is usually under the state. Um, so it wouldn't apply to any of that. So the only time that we ever use anything that would apply to our city code is traffic offenses. So if they're not using it, why have the potential of it ever happening? So just to take that thirty day jail sentence out of that mix, so that we don't get stuck with.
This goes to cleaning up the, the ordinances that.
Unless the city wants to have that potential out there, if you don't ever use it.
But Travis said we've never gotten to that.
Do you want to say my name again?
Yeah.
What was that, Cody?
Travis said we've never gotten to that point, ever.
Travis said in all, in the years he's been here, they have never instituted the thirty day jail sentence.
Well, and I kinda get that and I thought at first, and I'm like, oh yeah, let's get rid of that, why do we need that? But the more I've thought about it, the more I thought, once it's gone, in the event something had the severity where it had to be used, we no longer have it.
But you charge them.
So if we have it and we're not using it.
Charge them under the state if you have something with enough severity that they're gonna go to jail.
There's always something else they're doing wrong that.
Because if you charge them under the city, that's where this kicks in.
So they always write it under state code.
Most, most of the serious ones, they write under the state.
So I'm good with getting rid of it, if it's never gonna ever, we're not gonna need that.
You just use two, two words, you shit out.
Never ever not. So I don't think, never.
Mr. Mayor, you have somebody that wants to address the.
Do I have to address myself again?
Yep.
Jeff Merrick, Anamosa, Iowa. Um, if you're never concerned about using it, why not leave it?
Because.
Just a fear of having to spend the money if somebody does violate that rule?
Well, that was kind of my thinking at first.
If it's an indigent person.
And they need assistance from the attorney's office, state's attorney's office to defend.
So you're, you're assuming that they're going to violate a bigger offense and you're gonna always be able to ride the state train? And if you can't, then what? What if they aren't doing anything, what if the only thing they're doing is, is a ordinance violation repeatedly? Let's say it's habitual, you know, I don't know, public intox or whatever I know is the state, but they also have city ordinance is a, that runs public intox, well, you get it enough times.
Well, and that's where the state, if you get public intox enough times, you go with the enhanced.
But what are you gonna charge somebody that does the city or violation, city violation, city violation only?
Vagrants?
Usually there is a state code that.
Do you know what it is, anybody? It, it does anybody, I mean, it's great to, to say usually, but usually doesn't cut it if you're assuming then down the road it's too late.
So why are we fighting changing this?
Why not just leave it where it's at?
Why, 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 when you talk about some of the silly laws on the books, Mike Dearborn, when he was on the council, was convinced that we had a number, and, and I believe we do have a number of ordinances on the books that make no sense at all. I mean, you talk about.
Right.
You get on Facebook and you look at some of that stuff, silly laws that they have in place.
Right.
And so if we take this out of the books, what does it cost us? You've been in law enforcement.
I know, but what if down the road, you need to use it and you don't have a state one? Then, then you're gonna be kicking yourselves, you say, well, he rode the train and now we don't have any way to charge him at all?
I don't see that happening under the uniform code that Anamosa's adopted, that state rode.
I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there is that you hate to eliminate something you've already got in place.
We have no line item for pay on that public defender. There's no money there unless we have to amend the budget.
I, I understand, I understand the money issue, I get that, but it's gonna, the state's the same thing, it's all coming from our pocket eventually.
Should we ask a public defender?
No, we shouldn't, because he's a bad, he's a bad example.
But what we're removing is jail time.
Yes.
Not, not any fees, not any charges, it's just jail time.
Just to see if they're gonna be fined enough to be.
Because then you gotta pay for the public defender and who the heck wants to pay that money when it's right of a state charge?
I'd have to recuse from voting, I, I have an interest in a public defender getting paid.
Well, Adrian did seem just reason, I guess, to put this in front of us.
Did Travis bring this up, is, is that why we're talking about this?
No, this was Adrian.
Adrian brought it up.
That's what, you know, that was the first.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if somebody prompted him to look into it.
I read it by Travis, just to verify for information, how, um, the citations and charges are written and as he said, under city code, it's traffic violations. Mainly everything else is written under state.
Same way we did in Cedar Rapids.
And I kinda had the same thought you did, Jeff, I thought, boy, at, at first I was like, yeah, I don't want this city to pay for this, we need to get rid of that. And then the more I think and process it, I think about what if someday we can't prosecute or take it to the extent it needs to go because of, we got rid of it. So, yeah. It's never black and white, is it, we live in a gray world.
Any further discussion? It's a roll vote.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Do you want the possible waiver of second and third reading?
I don't.
So we'll wait till two weeks for that. Seven point oh, public safety, seven point one, motion to approve the renewal of beer and liquor license, renewal of class C liquor license with living quarters and Sunday sale privileges, Deb's Sports Bar.
No to approve.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Rich. Living quarters, does she have?
Yeah, she's the only one that has it, that are attached to whatever license.
All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Seven point two, discussion and possible action on street closure request on Main Street for, from Garnaville to the Lawrence Community Center from five to six P M on October twenty fifth for the spook parade.
Just to clarify, this isn't a, a true street closure, the police start off at one end and then at the back end, just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with the event.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Rich. Any discussion or further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Eight point oh, public works, none, nine point oh, finance, none. Ten point oh, city administrators report.
Okay, just to catch you up on a couple of things, the easy stuff first. Um, the, um, fire department did pick up their new fire pumper truck, they picked it up Wednesday. Um, and they are placing the nineteen eighty-nine Chevy pumper truck, which it's replacing, on a website called B P A auctions and I want to, and they're putting that on along with a nineteen eighty rush queen skid. They have reserve of two thousand on that and the pumper truck a reserve of six thousand. So I have to send that agreement in, I just, the fire service board is what they chose to do, so I just wanted to make you aware of it. Um, then, um, to update in the streets department, the final working day of this project is tomorrow, October tenth, for the Elm Street project. The engineer Scott Putoff is, um, has informed the contractor that they will have liquidated damages assessed against them for the contract. Um, he feels that there were some days not taken advantage of and, um, weren't doing their work efficiently. Um, the, and Greg said the approach, half of the approach on each side of the bridge was supposed to be done today, half on our side, half on the city side, half on the county side. Um, and they're doing that by hand. The machine work was scheduled to start tomorrow for the other concrete area, um, before the, our approach, but the rain is forecast now, so that may, um, have us think that happened tomorrow. Um, then the, um, jetter use, just to let you know, for City of Dyersville has been using our jetter for the last five years, Dan. Um, four years of that, um, which comes to about thirty thousand. They are, rather than billing them back, billing them, we are, um, switching camera use with them. So Dan estimates that when they start videoing, which would be a week, week after next.
Right.
Um, and doing a forty hour week, that they could use up that thirty thousand and do all the full town by quarter. So that's a good trade-off. We have been billing them from this point forward for seventy-five hundred, um, and that's about four weeks of, a month of jetter use.
Can I ask a question here? So they, Dyersville has a camera and we don't, and we have jetter and they don't? We've been jetting, not getting paid, so now they're gonna come and camera?
Yeah.
The whole entire town, every.
Dan estimates that that thirty thousand dollars would, he could get, probably get the whole town videoed. That's his intent, that's his hope anyway.
What's the timeframe on that, Dan, do you see?
Well, they're gonna start here another week, so I don't know how many hours Mike Lanson's gonna dedicate, because he's one guy from Dyersville.
So it could be a couple of years in the.
It could be a couple of years, yeah, to get that thirty thousand to talk, and they're aware of that. So just out of curiosity, why weren't we billing all, over all these years?
We, I'm building for the first year, but then, because they, actually been six years, and then when the public works director left, um, there was no understanding of who was creating that bill. I did the billing when I was given the information from the public works director and I was not given any information after he left. And Dan did not realize that I wasn't doing it automatically.
So miscommunication?
Yes. Yep, and I didn't think to ask about it, because we're gonna rebuild that one year, I didn't know if it was gonna be up to a million days, so partially my fault too, so. But that's kind of a nice trade-off anyway for the city and the county. Also, the building for the wastewater treatment plant was delivered last week. Dan stated they're gonna be cutting the doorway, um, in the concrete for the door for that. Um, and then hopefully the contractor will be, um, here in the next couple of weeks, depending on as his schedule allows. Um, an update on the G I S system, Dan's request was to, um, we have a contract with Power and Our Green and there's three thousand dollars in additional services, um, that we have. We estimate a thousand per department, storm water, water and wastewater, um, and to add new infrastructure as needed. So, um, but to give us room in and above that, Dan has five new manholes he needs added. And, um, Mike Lisca is estimating those at not very much, like fifty-seven dollars a manhole. And then he's, once, Dan would like to add a layer of G I S to track his jetting progress, to keep that up to date. And so in that, Mike said, suggested adding a twenty-five hundred dollar amendment to that area. So go from three to fifty-five hundred to give the city room to move, knowing that these two items are coming. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was on board with it, deal was in favor of it and he can.
Now that extra money, that's just to get it started, right? This lo- overlay for jetting?
Once, what?
Once it's set up.
Once it's added and set up, they don't use it.
We go back to the thousand dollars maintenance.
Yep. Yep. We, they put a thousand dollars in figured for each department, just to add new infrastructure as things came up or different needs came up, because they didn't know what, nobody knows what they're gonna need as they start to use the system, because it has a lot of functions and capabilities, so it's kind of a, it's kind of exciting.
Are we going, obviously we need to add the new lift station line and that type of stuff, but the storm intakes and the stormwater piping for Elm Street?
Greg's gonna be adding those too.
Okay, all the.
And, and, and that thousand.
All the GPS locations are made for that.
Yep, yep, and that thousand should cover those infrastructure. Um, what else was I gonna say? The, um, Adrian has, wants us to put it, I didn't realize that it got missed between when Al left, um, when I was going through emails, I did see an email from Adrian. Um, he would like authorization, which we'll put on the next agenda for the council, for him to proceed with acquiring title to the property on the one oh one and a half East Main here on the corner. They have a lady that is interested in purchasing that with the agreement to pay, um, and I, and I will give you a copy of that letter too, so you can see what that is. Um, but I'll put that on the next agenda, just to give you a heads up. Uh, like he did the, he did the community care building the council directed him to, to acquire title.
And can we have that, the commi- I missed the last meeting, I forgot to tell.
We did talk about, oh, the community care.
Can we get that on there? I just kinda want clarification on why we didn't wanna at least try to get it out there, Dennis Meyer.
Because the community care building and following up with that, um, the, um, there was a couple of items that was brought to my attention by Rich and I think Cody had mentioned it previously. Um, one item was requesting a business plan, which was in the bid notice, so it's stationed, which I thought Al had explained that, so I apologize.
We didn't have that information in front of us.
And so I apologize, I thought Al had already talked about that.
That's okay.
So that is, that is one of the things that Adrian had in there. The other question that was brought up was whether the city could request a bond, a bid bond, to cover, uh, pro- possible demolition costs that the city were gonna incur. Um, and asbestos abatement, if the city had to demolish it, um, that type of thing, and I did have.
So that would be if a buyer.
That would be if the buyers.
Walked away. Buyer walked away again, is that, like, what would, why would we want that?
Yes.
Kind of a performance bond, but that was something that you guys had discussed and was supposed to be brought back for discussion at, discussed at a June meeting, which was not brought back for discussion to the council.
So, at the next meeting, well, I'll put it on the agenda, um, I can tell you what the estimates that Al had given on, just estimates on it.
And if we're gonna have it at the next meeting, we can just have all the information at that time, I just was curious of
Okay.
Why we didn't just put it out there and try to get a buyer.
So, those two will be on the next meeting, so Adrian can have direction, um, and just for an F Y I., the REIT grant, the second REIT grant that the city applied for, um, we got a correspondence today from them that said, um, we were unfortunately, um, they are separated by large, medium and small cities, we are a medium by definition. There was thirty one applicants in that category, and we were the last.
Is this the one that Dusty wrote on, on our behalf?
Just. Yes, this would be the second REIT grant, we got the first one for the hundred thousand.
I didn't say we got one.
And what was the amount of this one?
So. Ninety two. So, just to let you know, they, and it's not official until the board, till, um, um, I think it's the D O T votes on that, so, just to give you a heads up, so nobody's disappointed. Um, and I think that was it, just council members, I need you to sign up for Pat's, um, consultation for the administrator search, I've got the calendar here. And then I also have M L A booklets, the Municipal Leadership Academy.
Mm-hmm.
If anybody's interested in signing up for any of those, we can get that done for you.
So, so, second to me is, uh, conversation on the jetter with Owen.
Oh, sorry, good thing you said that, I had a sticky note here, the, um, Jane McPherson, the city clerk for Owen, requested that, um, the city, um, come and jet man, lift station.
Back, back out of lift station.
Back out of lift station, have our employee do it, Dyersville does, has their own person running it, um, and I looked at the last fee schedule, which was passed in, uh, in two thousand and ten, it was a hundred and forty five dollars an hour for the jetter and one city employee, so, I didn't know if you would be interested in doing that, if you could, if Dan could give permission to do that, before he has time. He said it would probably only take a couple hours, but it's kind of an unknown, but, um, Dyersville's comes out to about forty seven dollars an hour for the four weeks with somebody else running it, so. But keep in mind, it's our insurance.
I'm in favor of it.
So, just looking for direction on that.
Do you have enough time right now, Dan, did?
We can make time. Uh, I do have one more comment, the Center Junction, I can't even tell you the outfit, they're from D U, they also requested the jetter, and wanted to get the jet five sewer lines for them, I can't believe it. It's kind of a mutually thing between cities, we do this with Monticello, Dyersville, about anybody around, and some of these smaller towns, they just can't afford the, a cost of jetter, so.
I'm all for working together with all communities, that's amazing and awesome, but at the same time, I don't wanna save your month from now and hear that you can't get your own work done because you're shorthanded and you need to hire another person and we're hurry, hurry, rush, rush and can't get anything done, so, you're gonna have to call that one, Dan.
I can make that call.
The last item that, um, in front of the council members, I copied the correspondence I received from Adrian. In response to my phone call to him, we've had several phone calls today regarding the Coca Valley, um, electric putting up, starting the process of defense in the area between Hoover and Ford, there has been a stay issued through the attorneys, um, when an appeal was filed, um, and as of today, they started defense. So, in response to that, I called Adrian, and Adrian suggested, the city has, um, first of all, he emailed the legal attorney that was in last contact with them for the R E C, and explained, as in that email states, the status of the stay and that they are breaking, and then, and Adrian said you have, he was recommending that the council institute a municipal infraction, um, which he wrote up the citation for that, and that's attached. The municipal infraction is seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, is what he's recommending, which is the max, and it would be on a daily basis until it is, the work has ceased. And he's staying until that October eighteenth zoning board of adjustment decision and meeting, that that's what he's saying. Um, it's a, it's not something the council has to decide themselves, it's an administrative thing, what you're doing is, with your, with the section of the code that that appeal applies to, the city has, you can do the municipal infraction, you can do an injunction, the municipal infraction would be a quicker, more decisive way to handle it, in response to following through with your responsibilities as a city and following that appeal process, um, or the other one would be an injunction, which is a longer uh, process to actually stop it, it's more expensive, has to go through the courts right away, um, so it could be, and that's why Adrian's recommending the municipal infraction. Obviously, your third choice is to do nothing. Um, so, so what we're asking for, as Adrian indicated, it's not on the agenda, and it doesn't need the council motion or direction necessary, uh, motion, I just need to know, being in the position that you have given me, I need to know what you would, a consensus from the council. I know what I would recommend and what the interim zoning administrator would recommend.
Serve the citation.
Correct.
Yep.
That's my vote.
So, I just need a consensus from the council.
Doing nothing would not be very favorable to businesses in town, am I correct?
That's an understatement.
I guess I, I'm Nureetan, um, and I own one twenty six East Main Street, and I guess, I just wanna say that I would, I would appreciate some kind of action, I know I just felt a real sense of frustration this morning when I went out there and saw, and start digging the, you know.
I think the whole community would appreciate it sometimes.
And I, I was very concerned about it, and I, I think it's important that, you know, that the, when it's, and the, that the stay be upheld, um, thank you.
My phone rang off the wall today.
Got no response from their lawyer, with Adrian's?
The last response I got, Adrian emailed me after this one, right before the meeting. Uh, excuse me, I have so many emails here, um, he basically asked Adrian to, uh, cite the section of the code, um, what, where it was, uh, I can't even look at it. Who's exactly, uh, uh. He, he acknowledged that we're seeing, but basically he was asking for, thanks, Mister Canoe, could you please provide a citation to both the Iowa statute and Anamosa ordinance authorizing a fine allegedly violating the stay? So, he was asking for this area of the state and city code that allows for that.
Did we provide that?
I, that's, that didn't come till, uh, uh, four, four thirty, and I didn't see it till after I got back from home in the twenty.
I suppose that's what we have.
And I haven't had a response from Adrian. So, so I just need a thought, yes or no, I guess, what you guys' thoughts are.
So. Yes.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of finding them, nor than I, I'm in favor of the stay, I mean, it's their property, they are working within their ordinance.
Give me some direction. You're not. Yeah, the stays are already been implemented because.
I'm just saying, if it was, somebody asked me in the beginning, I wouldn't have been for that either.
We're required to do that.
So, let's call the institution of the seven hundred and fifty dollar infraction, that's option A. If option B is to do nothing, are there other options?
The injunction.
The injunction.
Which is more timely and more expensive, honestly.
More than the fence will be.
So, we have one of three options in front of us.
But unfortunately, it's not an agenda item.
No, it's not, no.
So.
We're asked, we're not voting on it.
And we're, we're not voting on it. Yeah.
Right. I mean, the, the direction that it's heading, it's going towards a vote, even though it's not an agenda item.
I just need a consensus from the council to authorize Adrian to send that to Travis Smith now, right?
Looking for consensus, not, uh.
If you're asking my opinion, yes, I think you need to follow through with that. It's sad that it's come to this.
I would, I would like to remind the council that we work for the citizens. The Coca Valley is just one small segment of the people we represent.
And I agree, it's sad it came to this, there's, it would've been nice had everybody, the, all the businesses with R E C. could've sat at a table and compromised. That's what ideally should've happened.
And at least two people here have been fired.
Um, we shouldn't even be involved in this.
Jeff Merrick from Anamosa, again, that R E C. has walked over everybody in here, in my opinion, they walked over every business, they have basically lied their way into whatever they was benefiting the R E C. I talked to that guy personally, he told us what was gonna happen, we had no reason to be concerned, it was all gonna be gold and parking lot, space, plenty of access. Then he turns around and starts putting up a fence, brings a fence line in that's blocking every entrance to the lumberyard. No access whatsoever, the church won't allow him to go the other way. So, now we have to try to figure out a way to baby squeeze a truck in by busting out the curb, and the R E C. benefits this community how? Property tax they're gonna have to pay, whether they're in business here or not, or they sell the business, somebody else is gonna do it, but they don't have a, they don't sell anything here, they don't pay sales tax like all the businesses around that lot. Eliminate, that lot was used since I was a kid for parking, people maintained that as it was theirs, no matter who owned it. They were, it was maintained by the bowling alleys, the lumberyard, I mean, you can look back at places where there was a building out there, right where the railroad yard was, allowing the lumberyard to unload their stuff in and out of there. It, shame on us for not having a lot of stuff in writing, plain and simple, anybody supported that, drop the ball, we should've had a lot more in writing that said what he promised everybody. Kissing the baby all the way around and then getting us nothing. At least he could've done is saying, we're gonna, we're not gonna do anything for you, we're gonna put it to screws to you, and this is the way it is, at least we'd know at time. Then we could've done something a long time ago, but if you tell me it's gonna be this way in a verbal, and then you turn around and do the exact opposite, that's embarrassing. And then not to have anything in writing that says it's gonna be green space, or whatever he's gonna use it for, if we're gonna allow him to have it, and not offering it to anybody else. People that used it for fifty years, that bowling alley's been there since, what, how long? If I was ten, so at least forty years, all those downtown businesses used to thrive, and every time you turn around, we're just beating them down a little bit more. For the R E C., they can go anywhere, they're an electric company, they need more space, I agree. Shame on us for letting him manipulate us, shame on us for not saying, go, go ahead and leave, and we'll deal with it. They can have space somewhere else, everybody's gonna have a job, nobody's gonna be fired from the R E C. because they moved, might inconvenience a few people, but if you look, they brought us a list of how many employees were there, less than half were from Anamosa, out of like ninety. I mean, we did terrible research and we did a terrible disservice to the business and the economics downtown. Every time a business closes, I mean, you, you're just saying that you wanted stipulations on what they're gonna put there, why would they put anything here? Seriously, why would, businesses come and go like crazy here, it's a struggle to survive, and, and this community needs to support it, not beat it down one more step. Not for one man at the R E C. who thinks he runs the world, embarrassing and disheartening, to say the least.
Thanks, Jeff.
Well, I'm not looking to run any type of box score, but the R E C. is, is a vital company within Anamosa. Again, I'm not, I'm not ranking one in comparison to the other, I'm just saying that they, they are vital.
Fair enough, real quickly, if you have a violation, it's a violation, if I'm speeding down the street, here's my ticket. If the rules say, hey, there's a stay and you're not supposed to be doing anything, you're in violation of that stay, here's your ticket.
And he's basically forced us to do that.
Right, he's forced the hand, he is shoveling it down your throat, and basically going like this, if you don't do anything about it. One more thing he gets away with because nobody has the nads to do something, I mean, come on, give me a break, tough stuffings. If, if you're speeding down the street, you're gonna get the ticket, if you violate the stay order, you're gonna get the ticket, and your attorney is here for a reason, to recommend what's best for us, not what's best for the R E C. Rule breaker's a rule breaker, shame on them for breaking the rules, here's your penalty, is it, is it by chance, penalty by, uh, jail term of thirty days or more? Cause then we might need to keep that other one. Just saying, hold on to that baby, it might come up right now, and give Jim a new home.
Half the businesses. Am I correct that pretty much all the businesses have tried to make contact with him and have tried?
Well, I know Nureetan was over there this afternoon.
The sad part is, is we all should've met together at the same time, so that he can't tell me one thing and tell the board another thing. We should've all gotten together, they've come around one at a time, they tell me, and she says, oh, it's great, she can't wait, they tell her, oh, lumberyard loves it. They tell the lumberyard, oh, the bowling alley's going, thumbs up, this is great for everybody, when in fact, it's not, and everybody's complaining. But it's like telephone, if I tell him one thing, by the time it gets to him, nobody knows what it was. You can't do that, everybody needs to meet face to face, so that, like this, if you wanna say something, now's your time. He'll know what you say, he'll know what he says, nobody can tell me what the other person might've said, or what they thought was right.
As I was saying.
Actually, I, I just wanna add something, and part of the point, uh, uh, Nureetan, but part of the whole point of the appeal, and you all are aware
You'll get it.
that I'm the one that appealed the issuance of the, um, building permit, the point of that is to go through the process, because then, there's a process that any business has to go through if they're going to build and, to make sure that, you know, we are in compliance with ordinances, and that's the whole point of it, that it's like following the process so that it's done, I mean, it's there for a reason, you know, and, and, um, so I think that that's, it is important to, to uphold the process.
Okay, Rod, what were you gonna say?
Well, I kind of forgot, no. You know, there, there were errors in the process that brought us to where we are, I was part of that, I own it, uh, if you move forward, you, don't let those same mistakes happen again. I, I would've thought, even with as fast paced and technology is of today, everybody, all parties could've been neighborly from the beginning, but that didn't occur. Uh, the, the door just never appeared to be open, it was always closed, and conversations don't go well through a closed door. I agree that the process needs to continue, the stay was put in place, uh, I have not seen anything that says that was unjust. So, I will support Adrian's recommendation.
And that's, when you guys, we talked about the position as interim, I was directed to contact the city attorney on legal issues. And that's what I did, and in this case, I, I would agree with it, I would have no issue doing that, authorizing Adrian to do that. And that would be in the purview of the city administrator or the zoning administrator's job, and we're both in agreement with that, it's unfortunate.
Just wonder why they started, I mean, if they knew this was going on, this is just what Jeff said, he's forcing us, I mean, they don't wanna find him, I understand that.
Yeah, that, it's, we're not, you're.
Yeah, that, it's, we're not, you know, we're not being neighborly by instituting the fine.
That's it.
But, you know, they, for lack of better terms, they disrespected the stay that was in place, for whatever reasons they had.
I don't think it's they.
Well, McCoquita Valley's an institution. That's plural, it's they.
It's more than one person.
And they are holding no regard to the businesses in the.
So what do you recommend? We're talking around the little three here.
I'm good.
Where's what?
I already stated my, I'm in total agreement. I am backing the Anamosa businesses, the little mom and pop shops here in Anamosa one hundred and ten percent. Had we sat at the table and all played nice on the playground, I wouldn't be feeling this way. But I'm gonna back the businesses on this. Because without them, REC is gonna be nothing.
I've already heard of one no and not in favor. Let me ask, is anybody else not in favor?
As long as, to me, as long as Adrian can provide the documentation showing that about the fine, I would be good with that, as long as he can prove it. If he can't prove it, then we've got a different issue.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree too.
John? Yeah, I mean, like Rich said, though, it needs to be proven. I wish, I wish they wouldn't have started. I wish it'd been sooner so their attorney could've got back with Adrian and they could've maybe hashed things out to what is.
He just, he just wants Adrian to cite, to point out that section of the state code where this applies. Adrian wouldn't have recommended it if he didn't already have it in the city law and the state code. So.
I'm, I'm with Rich. I just hate doing this, but.
That's all I needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all you have?
I think you have twenty.
Alrighty. Eleven point one, council and mayor reports.
No report.
No.
I have no board reports or committee reports, although I did reach out to representative of the engineering company that we have obtained to monitor the phase two of the Elm Street project. Voiced my concern of the fact that it was closed off and the lack of activity there. Uh, that representative has been in contact with the construction company almost daily, trying to push them to show some progress there. Uh, and also for some answers. Appears as what we just talked about, that communication has been broken off. And they are, they're on the city side fighting to get this thing taken care of, as Tammy is reporting. So hopefully, in the days to come, that whole project can come to a conclusion. What, what has the council, I guess we're gonna have to lean to Cody and Bill here, what, what has the city or council allowed previously for use of equipment, manpower, uh, to another community? I, I agree that, you know, reach out to your neighbor, uh, share those resources you have. But, you know, I, I don't wanna be leasing the jetter out to every community, community or city in a fifty mile radius either.
That's why we developed the cost for the different pieces of equipment that the community owns. And we developed the guidelines where it was intercity.
Weren't, weren't those figures come up with, like their FEMA put those on at one point?
Marion.
I'm not, I'm not sure where those were gotten from originally. I just know the council approved that schedule back in two thousand and ten. That was from, so, I mean, they're older.
Marion.
And we didn't wanna, we had some discussion because some equipment was just going out. Um, I'd like to see it go out with one of our own employees so it doesn't get abused. Um, obviously, Dyersville, they have a guy that's trained to run it and, and they pick up the maintenance cost on it, so.
So it, it was, it's basically been previous to case by case basis on the request?
For intergovernmental units.
A- as far as guidelines that you talked about, Cody, are, are they written, or is it just?
I, I have a list of them, yeah, in my office, from an old, from a previous, that council meeting.
Could you include them on the next mail, emailing, uh, just so I?
With the next packet?
Yeah, just so I can see. I'd like to have a copy. Six months, I'll forget that you sent it to me. I'll ask you for it again.
And the price, that price setting was what, two thousand and ten? Is that something we need to look at, what currently other communities are doing?
Also, Dan, a few months or, I don't know, a couple months ago, you were before the council saying, oh, you were pressed, you needed more staff, you couldn't get stuff done, uh, just.
I'm ready to talk to you about that.
So, but now you're at, you're saying that we do have time available to venture down the road to jet another community's.
It's, it's one lift station, Rod, and not disrespect anyone in the way. You're talking about maybe three or four hours. If something's unforeseen to happen, yes, anything can happen.
Have, have you caught up because you have another employee?
We have been jetting for two weeks. We've had the jetter out trying to get ahead of my plans here right now. But I've repeatedly asked for prisoners. Five bucks a day, we got thirty guys stacked on top of each other over that prison. That's the first department head to ask for prisoners. And we're a major facility with a lab, biosolids, uh, the major facility itself is probably four people. Yeah, we've been short-handed for a long time. But there's no excuse under the sun for the public here that I can't have inmates at the street park.
You didn't say that, and you're, you're venturing into something.
I don't recall that conversation ever taking place.
I'm just saying, I can get it done. I've been under the gun for ever.
As far as, as far as the assistance with the, with the prison labor, if I remember correctly, it was, we asked you to get with Ray so we can find out what the protocol and the process and procedure was for it.
I've done all that.
I don't have a problem doing it if you need to use it.
Can we have Dan on the next agenda and discuss this, and you come with your information?
Why does that be on the agenda?
Because we're not this, this.
I asked for counsel?
Because we're, I'm asking.
Why can't it be on the agenda?
I'm asking you to be here to present the proposal.
Yes, we will get it done, Rod.
Thank you, Cam. Thank you, Dan.
And this is regarding.
This is not our business. I know that.
And made labor. Just come with what you want the council to know, Dan, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else on boards and commissions? Twelve point O business with council on items not on the agenda.
Bill Goodman, eight oh four East First Street, Anamosa. Uh, come to the council tonight to, uh, ask uh, if we can have, uh, at the next council meeting in two weeks, somebody come in and brief, uh, give a comprehensive briefing on the status of the Second Street Lift Station project, where we're at, uh, thorough review of what delays have been encountered. Uh, what, what has been done to work, work around the delays. And, uh, then I have a question for the council members. The, the, the Second Street Lift Station project, uh, entailed the placement of twelve inch wastewater pipe anywhere between the Second Street Lift Station and the, and the wastewater treatment plant at the river. Is that correct?
Yes.
There were some places where we did not have twelve inch.
Correct.
And that was, that was written into the project. Now, my, my question is, what about east of the lift station? Going east of the lift station, is, is that all twelve inch, or do we have piping of lesser diameter?
There's still gonna be some issues between Rosemary and Second Street. We really need to do the next phase of this project to eliminate all those issues.
What, what exactly is that issue? Pipe of, of smaller diameter?
To me, the best fix would probably be putting in a designated line from Rosemary to Second Street.
Forest main.
Okay.
Right now, it's not a forest main.
Okay. Which will eliminate a lot of stress in your neighborhood.
One point three five million dollars for that forest main from Rosemary to Second Street Lift Station.
Okay.
We got that information last.
Okay. Well, what are, what are, what has the council been talking about as far as that project?
We're not. We're get, trying to get the Second Street Lift Station done first.
First phase, we need to get done, and then we have to assess.
How we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah. I mean, it's important. Absolutely.
It's very important.
I agree. Um, every person who comes to the city council and every issue, your issues, it's important. I mean, it's all important. I get that.
What, 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 what about the wastewater piping east of the Rosemary Lift Station? Is that all twelve inch?
No, probably not. And the reason we're dealing with twelve inch going down to the main plant is because that's a forest main. And so when you have a specific size of pipe, you know how many gallons per minute you can pump. When yours coming down from your direction, if that's the east you're talking about, then that's all gravity feed. And so there's various sizes depending on what part of that community fits into, and I don't know what actually size gets down that street to the Second Street Lift Station. I don't know if it's a twelve, or a sixteen, or fourteen, or what it is. Dan, do you know?
I believe it's an eight inch.
Eight inch, okay. And that's all gravity fat?
When, when the city contracted H R Green last fall to do a comprehensive survey of the city sewer system, was, was the sizing of the pipe all over town not documented?
Should all be documented.
At the, visually from the, from the ground surface, when they opened a manhole, they documented it that way. They have ran into some issues that, there were some pi, pipe sizing that reduced or increased under the ground that they were not able to see from the top of the ground at the manhole. So maybe twenty feet down the line, it, it decreased size or increased size, so.
Okay, well, well, my, my concern is this. With, with all of the construction that has taken place in the last ten years, east of the Anamosa Care Center, and all, both commercial and residential, this city needs to ensure that we have an adequate shit stream all the way to the river. And if we're gonna wait until this Second Street, this phase one is finished to figure out how we're gonna pay for the second phase, then I, I think, I think something's amiss. I think we, we at least need to be paying serious consideration on how we're gonna approach it.
We can only improve from this moment on. For the last ten years, those of us sitting here, most of us have had no knowledge or anything of what has happened in the past. Dan, I have a question for you. When they do the camera of all the sewer line, we will have records then of exactly every pipe in town, what, how many inches it is, correct?
Correct.
We already get beat up over the cost of water and sewer. Part of that problem was that previous councils did not do justice by the system. Before we raised the water rates, Jim was about one break away from being in the red, because that's how little money that enterprise fund had. The new sewer plant down there was built before the old one was paid off because of a previous city administrator's financial program that he ran on that. We paid the interest, but we weren't paying any. So you can see that by the time we paid those bills off, anybody here that talks to anybody about water bills or sewer bills gets beat up, chewed on pretty good. Because the average bill for having it turned on is forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents a month, just to have it in your house. And so if we spend money that we don't have, and we have to borrow it, it has to be paid back. And those households in the community that already think they're paying too much are the ones that are gonna have to pay more. So we're doing this on a step-by-step basis as we can pay for it. It took a long time to get to this point because of the cost of this project. So as we're working through this now, that has been identified, it's been cost out, and if.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the, the summary, Bill, but, and I'm, I'm well aware of it. And I'm, I'm well aware of the, of the sewer and water bills in town, believe me. But we need, we don't wanna sit on our thumbs on this. That's all I'm saying.
We've got it drawn up, got it cost out, and we know that the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost.
Okay. I did have a con, a conversation with the contractor doing the project right now. He feels, after we were given that cost estimate from the engineer, he feels that he could do it cheaper, but i- in, in just the way it's routed. Um, but we just have to decide, you know, how we're going to pay for it, one, and even though he can do it cheaper, can we still afford it?
Okay. One more thing. The jettison truck. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with helping other communities as well, and it probably won't take that long to do it. However, I am concerned about the maintenance on the truck and keeping it serviceable in town, ready for use. The last time that the sewer backed up into my house in twenty fifteen, which was due to a clogged line, the jettison truck was broken and was in Hudson, south of Waterloo for maintenance. And I had to wait on rotor ruder coming all the way from Cedar Rapids. So I, I would just like that taken into consideration too, that that truck needs to be in tip-top shape, ready to go at all times here for our community.
The truck actually, I think, is more reliable when it's used more than when it sits for months at a time. And just like a lot of our military equipment, you know, you're familiar when it sits in.
No doubt, but it can be used in town more often than, than, than it is now, maybe. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Thirteen point O adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
First by Bill, second by Rich. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay.
Don't forget to sign up for consultation with.
Six inch. Either four or six.